There we go.
There we go.
In progress.
All right. Thank you, Grant. Thank you, Jim.
So to rewind, we called meeting to order, went into executive session, and then we just did the pledge, and now we had public comment. There were no public comment, so we just closed public comment and we're moving on from there. We've already had a half hour. We have the minutes from the March 21st, 2022 Board of Education regular meeting. Any comments, changes?
I'm looking at trying to follow the posting of the minutes and look at them. The current version up there, they seem to be incomplete. Because the, under the motion to approve the draft charter facilities management committees is presented, the copy of the charter is not attached to the minutes.
So is that what you're saying, it's missing, Barry? The
Charter is missing?
It's up, okay, we'll go back and attach it.
I don't think we can approve the minutes until we can look at the charter.
We can approve it with the stipulation that the minute, the charter will be included.
Last night, there's a whole discussion around that because we have to see, like, I would like to see how it's actually presented. In terms of like how, what we put on there as the official document, how closely it aligns with what we actually discussed at last meeting.
It's the exact same document that you
Yeah, we approved this, except that the word draft, the only thing that will change is the word draft. Be removed.
I
Okay.
I don't think we can still contend with the meeting time between us, we have that.
Well, we will, so that we can make the motion to approve it with the stipulation that that will be added.
Yes. The reason I'm trying to force that is because I think that we are in trouble with freedom of information in terms of how it comes up here. Because we, as I understand, if we propose a document, we have a motion to approve the draft agenda. Then what appears on the minutes is the final document. Then our statement to the public as to what they're doing in the mission session does not match what actually came up in the minutes. See, if we propose that we're going to approve the draft, then we have to put the draft down to the minutes.
Barry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we try to move on. I mean, you're, I think you're making this more complicated.
I think it's a big issue. I think it's a freedom of information issue, and let me go another way on this. I think this is something that we should bring to legal counsel, to see whether we are in violation of freedom of information and transparency by
Barry, because we have, sorry, but because we had a word draft in the original, which we have to have draft before we approve it, because it's not approved in case there are edits, we approved it. And now we mistakenly excluded from the minutes, you're right, it should be, it should be, the attachment should be in the minutes. But other than that, we didn't change anything. So I'm not sure where the F O I issue is.
Because we're saying we're doing one thing and nothing, you know.
You have to expand that on the one, what are we doing and not doing, I don't understand.
We're passing the draft. I have a motion. Then when we go to the minutes, well, we're not putting the draft in the minutes, we're putting a final copy.
Which is the exact same document.
Yes, but you see, it's what we've done is we communicated to the public that we're going to have a draft discussion.
You do.
The minutes come out, we put in the final document.
Correct.
See, that's not
That's what was decided and voted on by the board, done.
But see, it's not transparent.
I don't know what's
It hasn't changed.
I think we're, so are there any other
We could talk offline.
Are there any other comments?
You know, I mean, I'd like actually to make a motion that we bring this to legal counsel, make sure that we're compliant with freedom of information.
What, send me what your thoughts are in email, and I can check with legal counsel.
Barry, we thought that if final, final document, and they also attached a document with draft stamp cards, would you feel that would be, that would be correct enough?
I think at some point, we have, I think that the motion should be that we approve this document. The document that we go down should be a document that goes into the minutes. That's should not be a draft.
So Barry, I'm gonna keep us moving along.
We can talk offline.
If you want to email Jeff with some thoughts, and I'm happy to be copied on it, and we can check with our attorneys. But, and if we don't get approval of the minutes, we may go on, but I'd like to see, are there any other comments or changes?
Well, you're an attorney, what do you think?
No, 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 no.
That's not appropriate.
No, and she's not representing us, just because you're an attorney doesn't, yeah, that's not, maybe you can assign on any legal matter. So would anybody like to make a motion on the minutes with, and add the stipulation of adding the document for the the charter for the facilities asset committee?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 21st, 2022 Board of Education regular, regular meeting with the addition of, sorry, say that one more time, Barry.
It's the, the charter for the facilities asset management committee.
With the addition of the charter for the facility asset management committee.
I'll second.
That's any further discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? And Barry, same.
Me, I would tell.
And Phillip's in, up there. Motion passes, minutes are approved. Next, we move on to the special reports, and we have Anne Santoro here as the selectman representative. Hi, Anne.
No comment about the Dr. Foia issue, that's fine. I just, we can busy with a number of items. Of course, one of the most recent, probably most significant, I think, is that we last week approved the a plan of the A R P subcommittee. I chaired that subcommittee, and as you probably remember, the town received about $5.4 million in total in A R P funding. Half of it was received last May, or actually last June. And from that period of time to January of this year, the town appropriated about 1.6 million of that allocation. But 90% of that went to town sign projects, largest being 12,500, which is quite costly, close to $1 million. And then about 9 or 10% of that went to some local nonprofits. So the thinking is, we'll just speed through history here, but the thinking was, perhaps we should establish a subcommittee to look at the remaining 3.7 million and how best to spend that. Other towns have been doing similar things. So we did establish a subcommittee, our first meeting was January 20th, and we had a timeframe of about two months. We filed our report and made our presentation to Board of Selectmen by March 16th. So lots of work went into, went into that report. It's available online if you'd like to look at it through Board of Selectmen Minutes. Board of Finance will, will consider this at their Wednesday meeting. But basically, we have a number of town projects that have met the criteria under the A R P law and regulations, as well as a number of nonprofits and some small businesses who also met qualifications. Our town attorneys reviewed everything that our plan suggested and gave it the thumbs up, so we had, so it's your step for Board of Selectmen to approve. But we, you know, we're pleased with the, you know, I think we've done pretty well. We upped our, our contributions into community nonprofits from 9% to about 12%. So that was, we did come up with an application process. Both town side had its kind of application process, if you will, and then within the community, there was an application process. So something really important, too, because you've probably been reading about these pieces of funds under, you know, CARES Act and A R P. And so we're, we've recommended in Board of Selectmen, are pursuing this to have a follow-up. On town side, it's not an issue because we have a house and an audit. But if you are getting money into a community, how, how do you follow up? How do you appropriately follow up? So there are some documents that can be used for that, agreements we signed with recipients and follow-up steps. So we're pleased about taking that approach. But I recommend you take a look at the report if you want to have an idea of how, how much money is, you know, hopefully will be spent. Again, Board of Finance will have to make that final approval, and then we'll go to town meeting. So that's how that works out. But that's, I'm probably giving you more detail than you need, but I, I sort of lived it for two months, so that was my, my work this month. But I think all in all, I think it's, you know, well thought out, and folks worked really hard. And we had a nice group of community members, four of the eight were community members on the subcommittee. So I think that was really important, that we, that we did that. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions for him?
Yeah.
How about the CARES Act, about the Amtrak fence? Have we have any word on what's going on with the fence?
Yeah, so last that I understand, is really back in the, in the, you know, the walls in the port of Amtrak to come up with a better, you know, proposal than, than the first go around with the fence with the curved top and the blocking of the view. So I think something can be worked out. I believe Senator Bloomberg did come to town. Our first selectman Siri has spoken to the representatives at Amtrak as well. And I think that little extra push, you know, by our, you know, by Bloomberg is also very helpful, to be honest. So, so, but, but it, you know, and I think the community members of businesses were also pretty vocal about, it has to be a compromise here. So I think something can be worked out.
Other questions? Like that. Okay, so then, now we move on to the Eastline High School student representatives. We have Saachi Manat here. Yeah, I think that's probably best, yeah, thank you.
So I will admit, there is a little bit of a lull in the time of April, but don't worry, May is coming around the corner. But in the month of April, well, coming in May, there's the Teacher Appreciation Week and Junior Senior Proms coming up. And then we had our first indoor dance for spring flying on Friday. I think there was a pretty good turnout, there was masks, no masks, everyone seemed to be happy, and it was well organized, and everyone had a good time. And then all I have is the inductions for Spanish and German arts society were held in the library last Thursday night, which also went very well.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'll just add on to what Saachi was saying. So Boys and Girls Tennis Team both have matches coming up, so good luck to them. And then the Eastside Track Team did have an invitation on Saturday, and they did well, I believe. Last week was the week of giving for Ukraine, and we raised well over $1,000 for the cause, which is pretty nice. And then Boys and Girls Lacrosse now require ticketing online, and everyone seems to be enjoying watching outside.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Okay, so that closes the special reports. We actually, we have two consent agenda, consent agenda items. Are there any questions that we concerns?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Okay, passes unanimously, so there were two consent agenda items. The first one goes at home was the Astolot stained glass company has donated 150 pounds of scrap stained glass in 2021.
They do it every year.
Yeah. Okay, in the amount of $3,000, Eastline Public Schools for the use of the middle school mosaic art projects, it is something that they do every year and really do appreciate. Do that, I know my children years ago got to utilize some of that, so it's very cool, and we still have that in our house. In the second, one is a donation from Sir, right?
Siri.
Siri.
Krish, Krishna Swami.
Krishna Swami and Anne Marie Gray Crash.
Gurbay.
Gurbay. For Eastline High Schools, parents who are donating $500 to the Eastline High School Rocket Treats Club. These funds we use to purchase rocket motors that are approved by the F A A. A P G rockets, a 3D printer filament, and electronics, including computer software to program heroes, seros, and release systems onboard the rocket. And Pfizer has agreed to match $500, this $500 donation. So thank you for that donation, I really appreciate it. That ends, that's the consent agenda items, and now we move on to the discussion action section. And the first is personnel, so proposed appointment of one F T E twelve-month principal for Lily Behane's school.
Yes, it's my great pleasure to bring forth Brian Calcruth, who was our, is our finalist for the Behane's position. We had a very comprehensive process that involved three different interviews, a task was associated with the third interview as well. Appreciate Jill Creedy being part of the committee. Number of qualified candidates, and it came down to Brian being our top choice. And we're excited, Brian is Liz in Guilford, and I'll let you introduce your wife in one second, Brian. But he's currently an assistant principal in Sherman, Sherman School District. And Liz in Chester prior to that, was a elementary teacher, was a elementary math coach. Fits right in with the work, you know, of our math coaches and the work that we've been doing and really engaging in with the course of this past year. So we're very excited to have Brian joining our team. It's a chance to meet some of the administrators, but turn over to the board, and then, you know, Brian say a few words after that. We have a motion.
You're fired.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Calcruth to the position of 1.0 F T E twelve-month principal at Lily Behane's school.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Hasn't seen that honestly, congratulations.
Have you introduced Leah, and a little bit about yourself, Brian, as well?
Absolutely. First of all, thank you all so much, absolutely ecstatic to begin my work here in Eastline. And my wife is joining me here, Leah Calcruth, who's been behind the scenes for ever, pulling it together. Going through a really long commute for my current position right now, and so we're looking to rebalance. Join you all, so just really thrilled, the opportunity, and look forward to continuing to work with them. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you, Brian, so much. I've been having you join us, yeah, all right.
See you in July.
No need to stay, we're gonna have a news hearing. We'll have plenty of time for being here and plenty of work to engage in, so.
Some great restaurants in town.
Dinner drinks right there. Thank you so much, enjoy. Thank you so much, goodbye. I'll talk soon. Okay.
So the next item, which Jeff probably needs to be here for, is discussion action item for instruction. And it's the proposed high school graduation date for the class of 2022 and the last day of school for the 21, 22 school year.
So we had our three inclement weather days this year, around that junta, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we had our three inclement weather days this year, and it worked out perfectly, we didn't have to move the last day of school. So we are looking at June 15th as our last day of school, as well as high school graduation, and we want to get that date set. I know the high school committees and our parents are looking forward to having that confirmed for the graduation party and all of our graduation endeavors. June 15th is the date.
I would like to make a motion to set the graduation date for Eastline High School class of 2020 to be June 15th, sorry, 2022. Class of 2022 to be June 15th, 2022, and to adjust the 2021, 2022 Eastline public calendar to reflect June 15th, 2022 as the last day of school. For Eastline public schools.
I can, yes. Yeah.
It was, you did a good job.
Any questions, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion passes unanimously, okay. 15, June 15th.
2022.
Okay.
And just, so in the middle school ceremony, it will be the night before, the 14th, just so everybody's aware. So it'll be on the high school turf field again, like we did last year.
Oh, that was really good.
It really went well.
The kids love that.
Yeah.
We're excited for that.
Okay, moving on, we're, the next discussion action item is the proposed Eastline Public School paraprofessionals contract.
So I had a chance to take a look at the proposed contract. I want to thank the paraprofessionals, Chris Marzak, who is our paraprofessional president. She has been wonderful to work with. You know, Kim and Mariana, too, and Elise, the process went very well, and we had a very amicable relationship and negotiation sessions, and again, just thank you to you as well for being part of that, that process. So we brought that, bring that contract before you for approval.
Any questions on the contract?
I would like to make a motion to approve the Board of Edu- I would recommend approval of the Board of Education Eastline Public Schools Paraprofessionals contract from July 1, 2022 to June 30 of 2025.
I'll second.
At least I got it. And any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion passes unanimously. Excellent. So the next topic is discussion topic on the Board of Ed retreat, and just to give an update, maybe I'll give a quick update, and Jeff, please add to it. So originally, we were talking about actually tonight being the retreat date, and kind of two issues, one is obviously the deliberations of the Board of Finance would have prevented us from doing this anyway. But we also took some feedback on the facilitator, when we're talking a little bit about the facilitator whenever the last meeting was, and we actually are going to take a different route with who we're going to have as facilitator, that there's a person who actually helped. So I think Jamie, Candace, Jill probably know who helped us recruit Jeff and hire Jeff, Betty.
Betty Ask.
Ask.
Right here. Okay, got it.
Okay.
No, she's not part of that.
So I'll let Jeff talk a little bit about her, give a little background. So she also is not, was not available tonight anyway. So we're looking in the May timeframe, but we haven't heard back.
No, so she's been away.
She's on vacation or away, so we're waiting to hear back to lock in a date of when she's available. So we'll get back to everyone in terms of that. So it's not that, it's not the lack of importance of the retreat, it's really, we want to make sure we have the right facilitator and that we can have good attendance. So, hey, Jeff, to give a little background on Betty as well.
Some, a few of you know, you know Betty, Betty has done many of these retreats and has done a great job, has a lot of experience. So we found her to be the most qualified and the best for us, you know, to, to work with. Betty, I like Betty a lot as well, I think she's, she's going to do a great job for us. And she's very, to the point, and that's going to be good, that's what I think we, we all need, so that will be helpful. And she's not affiliated, she's not working specifically in this domain to do the treat under any organization. But reach out to her solely and specifically, can you come to a retreat for us? And we'll work out some sort of compensation, or she might offer, do it for free, I don't know, we'll see, but
We like free, but
We like free, but, you know. Exactly, so as soon as I get back in touch with her, hopefully it'll be actually this week, we'll try and lock in some, some possible dates.
And then pre that, we'll spend some time, and thanks, thanks to everyone who did send in some information. We'll spend, we'll share some of that with Betty, we'll, Jeff and I will meet with Betty to talk about, you know, what we're trying to, hoping to accomplish and making sure that we're aligned. And we'll have another chance as a Board of Ed to talk about this, once we, we need to get a date, and then we'll work backwards from the date to make sure that we have a discussion and make sure we're aligned on what we're going to talk about in the retreat. So any questions?
I'm going to bring this up, I'm not going to be really in the country most of May, so we can do it the first week of May. If not, I understand, I can't expect the schedule for it to evolve around me and my travels, but
What do you back to, Jill?
I give back the 31st, I mean, this is not
When you're 31st, I live in 10th of May.
Okay.
It's good for you.
Five, five, five.
I get tired. This is like on the bucket list type trip, so don't deny me. Don't, or have fun. Whatever you guys want to do. Whatever you guys need to do, I understand.
I have a question to you, what was your response, right, from board members for the questions that we were asked to
Remind me, I saw Um, I think we got almost everybody, yeah, I think we're almost, almost over everybody. Yeah, yep.
I just said
Give me a minute, I can tell you.
This woman, I really she was amazing, she's a very straight shooter, and I really liked the fact she went immediately to, this is what you need to do, this is, you know, this is what I hear you saying, bam, bam, bam. And I found that, I just found that very effective, because it was a tough decision to hire a new superintendent.
She, by far, is the most impressive educator I've ever worked with.
You know her.
She is one top-notch woman.
So she knows what it's all, she's no, it's not like she's above or never dealt with the board, or
She knows education, no doubt about it.
You want to spell that?
O S G A. O S G A, yes.
It's on my black book.
Good, and I think it's definitely worth us waiting to get the right person to facilitate, because I don't want to waste all of our time. If we're going to do the retreat, it's a big commitment for all of us, so I do want to make sure of that. Any other questions?
As a result of doing this, what is going to be the outcome of it?
So I think we have more time, I think we'll talk about this over time, let's get a date, and then we're going to talk about kind of making sure that we're all aligned. What are we going to hope to accomplish, Sean, and what's it going to be like? So I think we have some time to, to go through that in a little more detail.
You have no preliminary thoughts on it?
I think we all do, Barry.
I think we do have thoughts, and we collected a lot of that information, I think we need to kind of condense that into something and share, so that's
Eric, a quick question on the feedback that you've collected, so you have kind of a broad range of feedbacks that you can, as you're saying, condense, but sort of prioritize or get us
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a broad range of feedback, I think there's some themes that are consistent, so you want to make sure we capture those themes, share it with everyone, but also make sure the things that you know, just because only one person said it doesn't mean nine people, other people aren't thinking it, maybe just may not have said it. said it. So it's making sure we capture, have a discussion, a broad discussion about here, here are the common themes, here are the other things we've heard and then see collectively how we want to go about the retreat.
We have, it's like seven, eight, eight folks that have responded with some great information, great thoughts, feedback. So I've got a running tally and list of everybody's, you know, comments together that we can decide.
She was superintendent in Live Hall Club.
What's that?
She was superintendent in Live Hall Club.
Yeah, she, yep, she's been in a couple of different districts.
Yes. And if people have, you know, we have tons of people do, haven't responded or have additional comments, you know, feel free to send Jeff, copy me as we continue to kind of progress. But, you know, we have a little time that we'll be able to consolidate, get a date, consolidate the information, come back to another board meeting and spend more time. We abbreviated this one to just discussion. In recognizing that we had a brief agenda, we don't have a lot of time. We have the policies that we want to go through as well. So that's why. Not cutting, cutting the discussion short today, but not cutting the discussion short in the broader terms.
So I'm wondering if I can ask a question. Will Betty or Dr. Aska get the questions and the responses prior to, and then perhaps next step, my suggestion would be to ask her if there's anything missing blanks, like what is being indicated, what further information, and then maybe another potential query out to us, like how we would respond to the next level of questions.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. I think Maven Lee or was suggested about a pre-survey and so, so I want to see what she want, you know, what, how does she want, here's some information we collected.
She gives them the district.
So she can think a little bit about what the concern, and then how do you, you've done these before, what's, what's kind of your process that you want to flow through and talk with us and then see where we go from there.
Well, I'm also thinking that you two might have some feel like there's some missing, like you said, one person said it, nine person might feel it.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Barry, I, I can make a comment. Have you, have you ever worked with Betty?
No.
Okay. There will be outcome from our meeting. We won't, we will not go to this and there won't be, it won't be just a, oh, we had a conversation. There will be a to-do list and there will be an outcome. It won't happen that we'll go to this meeting and just sit around and talk. Something will get done. I can guarantee it.
Yes. And I think there's two parts to that. One is, you know, the outcome of how we all become better, even better of a board coming together, unity there. And then the second outcome, from what I've got, we're getting more discussions, but you know, our next level strategic plan. So I think you have two pieces coming on there.
For transparency, can we see the ideas that were submitted by the board?
I don't want mine, I don't want mine shared.
I don't mean. No, no, that's fine. I mean, I, yeah. So we'll condense and consolidate, anonymize it and then share the information. So. Okay, then. Moving on to policy, discussion action items, policy, we have a number of policy items to go through. Do you want to take those?
Sure.
You go through that.
All right. These are all second readings. The first one is the second reading on new policies. They are policies, hold on destruction of records, the litigation, retention of electronic records and information and uniform treatment of recruiters. We did have questions from Barry and Kate. They were answered in the Friday email. I don't know if anyone saw them or if anyone else has any other questions.
I have a process question. So this is the second reading. Does this mean you want to go through the second reading? There will be a motion to approve these?
Correct.
On the information you sent back for the, I went through to try to find a policy on your uniform treatment recruiters and the, yes, in original policy, there's a bracket there about, you know. When you put the comment on the update, you simply said specified programs that would be heard. And I don't know what those specified programs are.
I can just, I would, I mean, I would try and stay vague on that because I don't think we should narrow it to one specific program or two specific.
What is the language?
Yeah, broader. It consists of, you know. Appropriate programs such as, and I don't know, I might just say those, career days, college fairs, or items such as individual school, you know. So leaves it open. So we have all the things too that would be my recommendation.
That, what you just said, that's going to be in place of the brackets on the. Where, second, I think about these numbers. So. That's the policies on the 2000 series. The new policies, the suggestive revision and the deletion.
So the first one is the three new ones.
Which is just the construction or attention.
Correct.
Other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested new policies in the 2000 series.
I'll second.
I think Jill got it, Candace. But thank you. Further discussion?
You don't have to specifically say those three policies listed here.
I, I said, I think I'm pretty sure I said as presented. So, but I can specify them if you'd like me to.
They're good for precision.
All right. I'd like to amend my motion to say I would like to approve the following policies in the 2000 series, hold on destruction of records, litigation, retention of electronic records and information, uniform recruiters. Is that okay with you? Yes.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Anonymously.
And then the second one is the suggested revision of policies in 2000 series, which is, we'll sit here as a 2010, you're not changing anything in it. We're just giving it an up-to-date date saying that we reviewed it.
Question?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the suggested revision, which is a date change in policy 2210.
Your second?
I'll second. She didn't let her about it.
They got it, I guess. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed.
I'm going in, I'm just, it's ready.
Okay, so moving on.
So this next one is a suggested deletion of policies. Policies that you do not need, you're not recommended to keep firing the department. Pop, agreed with their recommendation.
A lot of them are statute.
A lot of them are statute driven or they're somewhere else or there's no legal need to have them.
Any questions?
I'm due. I should probably answer this, James. So since what some of these are is they repeat, they're the statute that is in the Connecticut law, is that correct?
Some of these are in statute in Connecticut law. Some of them are not. Off the top of my head, I cannot remember which ones are and which ones are not.
Oh, that's okay. But when you say statute, I'm going to say that is word.
Connecticut.
Isn't it, okay. Just want to clarify that.
Okay. When I say statute, it's Connecticut general. I'm just, I'm just used to saying statute. I worked in it of course for a long time. So I just say statute as a matter of habit. I'm sorry. But none of these are done by charter. Some of these are done by union agreement.
Through negotiations.
Negotiations, like they're just in their union contract negotiations. So how does works? Some of the verbiage in these is in union contracts. Sorry.
Other questions? Barrett?
I understand this policy that we're deleting it. The answer is given was that, I asked the question, if we delete, how do we monitor progress? And the answer is through the use of other data sources. The policy is not necessary in that. I understand it's not a policy issue. It's really a practice issue. And. Love me thinking about the fact that we really have no way, or to this point, we have no way of monitoring the progress towards goals like those outline school improvement plans. Know that it's not a policy to do that. It still is a procedural issue. And at some point, I'd like to make a motion that the board receive quarterly updates on progress schools are making for their school improvement plans. But I think that's a missing part of our schedule. So I'd like to make that as a motion.
So just, so are you making a motion now or you, I just want to.
I'd like to make it now.
So.
Yeah, you're going to need to make an actual motion.
Yeah.
So what's the motion?
The motion would be the board event will receive quarterly briefings on progress being made on school improvement.
It has nothing to do with policy, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're in the middle of another, shouldn't that wait until we discuss committee or comments and future agenda items? Isn't that a future agenda item?
I mean, he's making a motion. Somebody wants to second it.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm not entirely sure. I thought, I don't think I'm prepared to vote on this yet because I'm, I'm a little confused as far, but, so this has nothing to do with policy. You're, you made a motion. Can you just tell me a little bit more about what?
It's the policy that we're deleting.
Yep.
The policy that says there'd be a, a process in place. Would the board review curriculum and activities and so on? We're getting rid of that policy. Now, my mind, that leaves a void. That leaves a void in us saying, like, then how would we, the board, have a way to monitor the progress and activities that were outlined in the policy that we're doing? So this is my first motion. I'm just trying to fill that void to say that as a board, we should have a process in place to monitor one of the activities that would basically umbrella all that stuff that's in the delete policy would be the school improvement. So I think that it's, as a board, we should be doing some type of review or monitoring of the progress that the schools are making towards activities like those outlining school improvement. So I'm just trying to fill the void left by the deletion of this policy.
Go ahead, Laura.
I, I hear what you're saying here. I think what Barry's talking about is something that will take a lot of time to develop those benchmarks from the policy. If in fact, the board were going to do a review for it. I'm also curious about whether there's an administrative review of those practices. So I, I think it's worth considering, but I don't, I know I'm not ready to say, you know, let's do this. But I have a lot of questions and I think it's going to be considering.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? But, you know, this is, seems like a pretty good topic at the retreat to discuss kind of more holistically of, you know, what are we trying to achieve? Why are we going to do that? And what, what it's going to do? And is that the best way to do it? It seems like it's ripe for something to discuss at retreat. Is that something you'd consider or do you want to, I mean?
Here I have the kitty kick soundboard. This is a very important topic. I think that we've been in years and we've never done anything like. I think it's incumbent upon us still. I don't think it's that. Complicated an issue just to say that the school improvement plans are out there and there's a should what and about the school improvement plan. And it should not be that difficult just to bring stack back to the board and for the basis to see what's happening on the school improvement plans that are already in place.
Yeah, I mean, if I chime in a very broad, that's a very broad motion. I have no idea how the board, 10 members would want to see that data, see information. I think that warrants a much larger conversation. As I said, again, it's, the last two years have been COVID related too. So, you know, it's, it's hard to, we've had a lot of conversations about, we haven't been able to do a lot of that work because we haven't had the data to be able to do it sort of thing. So I just, the retreat idea is a great, there's where you would have that conversation. So we could begin to outline how it is that, that you would like to, you and you and you, 10 members would like to see that, that information brought forward. I'm not saying it's not a good idea and it's not something we should do. I think it should be. It's just how do we outline in doing that to, to just. They are specific. Yeah, yep. But we, we've been interrupted quite a bit the last two years though as well. So we haven't been able to produce, I think, what we really thought this year too, we could produce. So we do have some, we do have some data. So.
So just going back, can I again suggest that, you know, we're talking about a retreat in the next, say, month to six, four to six weeks. So we're not talking about four to six years and I don't, four to six months. And four to six weeks will have a retreat. You know, I, if you want to outline a bit of what, kind of in a little more context of what you're shooting for and provide that to us as well. So that we have the context to bring it to the tree to be happy. Or you can keep your motion and we can go through your motion. I'm just, that's a suggestion of. Waiting for the retreat and seeing if we can make progress that way.
We do have a second on the table too.
Yep.
And we're in discussion. So I think you got to.
And this is my question with I, I, you know, Barry's saying and I, I agree with him, but I also realized we're just going to be having two years of pandemic. We all know how it affected us personally, let alone the school system. So is there, what, how have we thought we'd vote on this? But I think when you, I would like to put a marker out there in the history. Yeah, I think for me to the, what do you call it?
Retreat.
Is a good point, but I want to be sure that maybe for at least 2022.
Twenty two.
For 2022, for 2023, that we really think about doing this and that it's a committee together that outlines that. But I don't want to lose track of what he's saying. I think it's.
Absolutely. And I think when we talked about the retreat, one of the things about having the retreat.
But that's not going to be concrete as much, like what I'm saying is.
Well, it's, it's the setup. So one of the things that, you know, for the past two years, we've been discussing, you know, do we wear a mask? Do we not wear a mask? We're cohorting, we're hybrid, not hybrid, all that. We're, hopefully, fingers crossed, we're coming out of that and now's the time really that we should focus is what's next. What are those things? And this might be something that hits those things. And then we have to figure out what exactly, how it all kind of fits together and what it is to drive forward. That, that's.
And part of the teacher.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'll remind you.
Absolutely. Well, it should be part of the retreat. I mean, it's, it's kind of right in the sweet spot of what we're trying to have discussions on is what is next and what are those things that we can do?
It sounds like it aligns really nicely with, like what you said, what we're trying to accomplish in the retreat. For me, I think that warrant that. We have the opportunity to build that out.
I call the question, please.
Barry, do you want to continue with the motion and we'll go to a vote?
Well, you're, Jamie calls a question.
Yeah, have a second.
Another question. Jamie called the question. Yeah, I called the question. You two thirds, you basically who to vote on that motion? Jamie called the question.
I called the question.
So you got.
To stop discussion.
That's right. No more discussion.
That means it goes to a vote.
Go to a vote. Go to a vote.
We are voting on Barry's motion to receive quarterly updates on school improvement.
Okay. All those?
But that's just the motion. That's the motion.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I was opposed.
We got you, Candace, thanks.
Four-four-two.
Doesn't pass. Yeah. So motion does not pass. So let's go in back to the original issue of the policy. But Barry, please send in your thoughts to Jeff and I for, for the retreat.
Definitely a topic that needs to be discussed.
To make a motion to approve this suggested deletion of policies. Twenty-one hundred, twenty-one eleven, twenty-one twenty-one, twenty-one thirty, twenty-one forty, twenty-one forty-one, twenty-one forty-five, twenty-two, twenty-two thirty-one, twenty-two fifty, and twenty-four hundred.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hey, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained.
Stained.
Okay, motion passes. Next one?
Sure, the next one is suggested deletions of the three thousand policies. Same things. The other ones. Same things from our attorney. Suggested deletions. Questions?
There, please, a question on policy three-three-one-zero, which is Stan has to build the budget. In the update of responses, we will use the standard for our common charter and Connecticut general statutes and to do.
Barry, which one is that?
Yes.
Policy three-three-one-zero.
You mean three-one-zero?
You mean three-one? That's three-one-zero-zero. Yeah, I didn't see that either. Sorry, can you, because we were all looking for what, what is, it's three-one-zero-zero.
That was a type of formulation of the budget. That, this was a process, we sent the response was that we reduce that into our common charter and in the Connecticut general statute. Now, the, again, this is a void, so much of the last, for, for three years, when we've been trying to deal with budgets. We've had discussions about the outcome. Uh, this year, we made progress to have outcomes on the four percent increase in the budget that we're out with, and that still left like ninety-four percent, ninety-six percent of the budget without specific outcomes in terms of what was going, and what we were delivering in terms of the fifty-five million dollars. You know, as an outcome for the budget that we adopted. So, as before, I'd like to make a motion that to fill this void. On the next physical year, budget will include specific outcomes, measures of accountability for the entire budget, not just budget increases, to inform taxpayers of the return on their fifty-five million dollar investment.
So I guess my question is, are you asking us not to delete it, to keep it and alter it?
No. You can delete the policy simply because you, again, the idea you said that the policy is unnecessary.
She's looking for new, looking for new policy.
Looking for a new policy?
No. Because what you've said before is that the policy is not necessary.
Right.
It's, it's process oriented.
Right. So the policy is not necessary, and, you know, the lawyers said it doesn't exist. It's like, can't go against them. We don't need the policy. But by deleting the policy, we may avoid the accountability for how we go about developing the budget. So I'm trying to fill that void with the motion that for this next year, we develop specific outcomes for the budget that we're going to bring forward for this next year.
Barry, I, I let the motion, another one go through. I'm going to, you know, recommend.
Can I?
Can I recommend, can I recommend that that's, again, something that we can talk about at a retreat? We can talk about how we function, more about how we function, and what we're looking for as a board, rather than trying to make a motion in the middle of our getting through our policies. I mean, that's just my, my recommendation.
I'm doing, but the issue is that I, it's a very important topic. And, you know, we keep everything to keep coming up with, it's like, okay, we're putting this on the topic for the retreat. We're putting this on the topic for the retreat. We're putting this on the topic for the retreat, which means that we probably won't get to it.
Well, I, yeah, I, I, I kind of disagree. I mean, what we need to talk about at the retreat, or what are the things that we're going to prioritize? What I can tell you is all these things we put on the list, we may not prioritize. It's not saying that we're going to prioritize and, and then have a group look at this and make sure we drive it and stuff. Because then we need to decide what are those things that we do want to drive. But it, it's on the topic for discussion at the retreat. I'll put, Jamie, you want to?
My, my, my statement was going to say that our current policy doesn't even have that language in there that you're looking for. So I guess I'm trying to figure out what it is you're looking for. You're not looking for a policy. You're just looking for a statement in a motion that we're going to.
It's a, it's. It's coming up in the, it's coming up in the policy discussion, but it's really a process.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Question of what we're going to do as a board, and what we, we want from Jeff and his team to provide to us. I mean, that's what I see is, we're, we're having that kind of, what do we expect from Jeff and us? We're collaboratively to produce. Seems like it's coming up in the policy discussion. I don't know that it exactly fits there.
I have another question. And I'm just wondering, so the, the text offender notification, was that was another one that we're looking to eliminate or delete?
Yeah, I just want, we have a motion, I just.
Yeah, but yes, nobody's seconded it yet, so.
And this is a, this is a process, perhaps, so, so we delete this, then what happens?
I mean, is a policy under the one thousand series that we approved at our last meeting?
Okay, so it's been replaced. But the, the process, I guess, is somewhat cumbersome and knowing logistically.
At the last Board of Ed meeting, we approved policy twelve fifty point one.
It might be easier or clearer if we can have a better understanding that it's not just a matter of deletion of a policy, but the policy, because these are protective things. So if we don't have the policy in place, what's going to continue to provide that protection and procedure for all of us, so that we know that things are okay, and that's. Well, perhaps, had a conversation or discussion about some of this, that might really expedite the whole process, rather than this, so, system that we're going to.
May I, may I interject and just make a suggestion? I, people can't really see me, so I'm so sorry. Is it possible?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Candace.
Oh, okay, so great. So to me, I'm listening to a tremendous amount of confusion about policy, process, legality, all of these different things. And it's appearing that people are taking the opportunity at board meetings to question and almost interrogate. That's kind of what I'm listening to and watching. To take that opportunity, and it's simply the wrong forum. If, if understanding and education on policy and the process, maybe we need to bring someone in to educate the board members on how we are to do things. The legality part of it, the questions, the Q and A, maybe, I'm not, I'm just, I'm trying to, I think, process, listening and watching the board. And it's interesting, because normally I'm there, right? But this time, I'm, I'm watching and tuning in. And it really screams that some board members really need some navigation on the process of policy. So is that a possibility?
Yeah, so Candace, what I would, it's a great point, and Jeff and I talked a little bit about this, is, you know, one, so, you know, people have time to go to one of the policy meetings, and now, I didn't go previously, and I've started to go the past few. You learn a lot about the process just by attending one and hearing what are, working with their attorney, what they're saying, and why they're suggesting these changes, that I think will make everyone a lot more comfortable that we're following a really good process. We were getting very good advice from our attorneys. We're, we're working through this, you know, Jamie, Elisa, Jill are really putting some rigor into how we go through this. So I, I, that's what I would suggest, rather than, you know, bringing in attorneys to give a training, we can. But again, there's dollar signs associated with that. So I, if, if we already are using them at the policy meetings, they're already there, and we're already paying for them. I, I strongly suggest, you know, come to one of those, you will get, oh, I know, I got a lot more comfortable after attending a couple of those on how this process works. We're also, you know, we have to go soon. You know, we're trying to get through all these policies that, if you look at a lot of the dates, they're last revised nineteen ninety-four. And they just haven't been looked at, for whatever reason, they haven't. And we're trying to get through the, you know, one through nine thousand series. And once we've done that and updated them, then there's every opportunity that if someone sees a policy, say, you know, can we take a look at that and bring suggested policy? Can we look at this? Because I have some questions, or I was thinking maybe one of, that's what the policy committee time on more of the discussion about the policy and how we approach it and how we write. Right now, we're trying to get through and update these policies, which is a Herculean task, and trying to get through that. So my suggestion would be, if you're unsure of the process, please come to one of the policy meetings or two. Again, as a listener, as a public listening, hearing. And then we kind of can move from there. So that would be my suggestion.
It's a quick one, a publication. The candidate policy meeting, I understand policy and not questioning policy. Right, the policies are as they're suggested, let's move on. Problem comes with this meeting is that for us to introduce a motion to be considered, we either have to try and go through the item fourteen, see if we can get it in that way. Or we introduce it as part of a topic that's currently being discussed. Now, in this case, because the budget is currently being discussed as one of the policies, I'm introducing a motion related to the budget, not the policy. To fill a void left by the policy being deleted. So this is not a policy issue.
But we're under, we're under discussion action items or policy.
But whether policy.
And you're saying it's not a policy issue that you're making a motion? Do you understand where there is a disconnect, right?
Let's see, the topic is the budget. Because the budget is a topic, we can introduce a motion related to the topic of the budget.
The topic is policy.
Policy is a budget.
This is a topic.
Why draw the motion? Why draw the motion? We can't. I just, we've been here for three years, and this, this clear issue of our budget, to say, what are we doing with it? Keeps getting kicked down, kicked down, kicked down the road. We never get to it. And I'm just trying to figure out a way to get there. You're telling me you're going to do it in part of the retreat, we, we'll do it.
May I do point of order? Point of order?
Yeah, Candace, I think we're, I think we're moving, we'll, we'll move on, and we all have to leave, so, and we'll, we'll move on. I think Barry's withdrew, drew the motion. Barry, I'm happy to talk to you, you know, another time, and just how we make this kind of work and stuff. Can we? On the, because we're not, questions on, any questions on the policies that we have here?
I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested deletions of the following policies in the three thousand series. Thirty-three thousand, thirty-one hundred, thirty-two forty, thirty-two fifty, thirty-one seventy, thirty-one eighty, thirty-two ninety, thirty-three thirteen, thirty-three thirteen point one, thirty-three twenty-one, thirty-three twenty-six, thirty-three twenty-six point one, thirty-two forty, thirty-four thirty-two, thirty-four thirty-four, thirty-four fifty, thirty-five ten, thirty-five thirteen point one, thirty-five fourteen, thirty-five sixteen, thirty-five sixteen point one, thirty-five seventeen, thirty-five twenty-four point two, thirty-five thirty-two, thirty-five thirty-three, and thirty-five sixty.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thanks. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Laura? Motion passes. I'm going to suggest that we defer the next, I, topic, to the next meeting. I'm going to close the discussion action items. Any admin reports, or can you handle that?
We can handle it.
If you need to send an email.
Yep.
Committee reports was just the policy committee. And word comments?
I just want to thank all of you administrators or whatever, who want to identify yourselves out as sitting here and being patient with us and listening to us. So we appreciate you being here. We have a lot of respect for everything you do. I definitely don't say it enough, but I think all of the board agrees with me. Thank you, thank you for everything you do every day, and thank God, we're past the COVID, excuse me, I said these words. We are past COVID. So again, we haven't said it enough, we appreciate every day you give and every hour you give. And thanks for being willing to sit for us, sit with us, and sit through the meeting. Thank you, thank you, and I, I know we all agree. Thanks, Hannah.
Thanks, everybody.
Do I hear a motion?
So.
And we will adjourn at six forty-four.
I said so moved.
Yeah. You were sending down.
Okay.